Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. It's always nice to have an external facilitator for processes like this so that the board and the leadership can actually participate in the process versus trying to lead and participate in the process. I've been lucky enough to work with, I think, 16 districts now in our region, and these all play out a little different. So I kind of go with the flow and change it up based on what's working best for the group. But what we'd really like to do tonight is kick off the whole strategic, and I call it strategic visioning, and I'll explain that in a second, but kick the whole process off with input from both school and board representatives, but also from the community. Really starting the process with the input from everyone that's a stakeholder in the district really helps to drive the actions moving forward. So this will be a very interactive session. I will hopefully be doing the least amount of talking, and you all get to do the work. And then I am going to just say right from the start, when the session is over, you're going to feel like, "Now what?" Or, "But what do we do with all that information?" So I will reiterate this along the way, but we document all of your input tonight. And then my job over the next couple days is to turn that all into a document that can move forward into the next two strategic planning sessions and highlight some trends and patterns and priorities that we see from our discussion tonight. So this is very much the first step, and it will come full circle over the course of three sessions. So if you do leave tonight feeling like, "What's next?", that's okay. The leadership will share back with you the final product from the process as well. So first, since I'm guessing not everyone knows everyone in the room, but I don't necessarily want to take the time to do full introductions all the way around the room, I have a quick and fun activity which will also let you know that I believe strategic planning can be entertaining. It doesn't have to be boring. Does anybody believe me? Only Mr. Sampson. Okay. I'll repoll at the end. But I do like to bring a bit of a sense of humor. So if everyone can grab one of the blue Post-it notes in the center of the table, instruction number one, and a writing utensil. If you didn't bring your own, there are some in the middle of the table in the plastic box. It doesn't matter if it's a pen or a marker, or colored or black, doesn't matter. So you take your Post-it note, and I want you to draw a pig. Now, this is not an art contest. Don't look at your neighbor's pig. Just draw your own pig. Don't even glance at your neighbor's pig. Focus on your own pig. Five, four, three, two, one. This is the pig personality profile. All right. So everybody, just now you can glance at your tablemate's pigs. Did everybody draw the same pig? No? Because we all have different personalities. We're all going to have different opinions tonight, different priorities tonight. But we'll learn a little something about each ourselves by what we drew. So if your pig is toward the top of your Post-it note, that means you are a positive, optimistic person. If it's toward the middle of your Post-it note, you are a realist. If it's toward the bottom of the paper, you tend to be a pessimist and sometimes behave negatively. If your pig is facing left, you believe in tradition, you are friendly, and you remember dates, especially birthdays. If your pig is facing forward, like looking at you on your paper, it means you're direct, you enjoy playing the devil's advocate, and you neither fear nor avoid discussions. If your pig is facing right, you are innovative and active but don't have a strong sense of family, nor do you remember dates. If you drew a whole lot of details, and I didn't give you a lot of time, but you're analytical, cautious, and sometimes distrustful. If it was drawn with only a few details, say you drew a stick pig, you're emotional, you don't care much about details, and you are a risk taker. If it was drawn with four legs showing, you are secure, stubborn, and sometimes stick with your ideas. If it was drawn with less than four legs showing, either your pig needs prosthetics or you are insecure sometimes or are living through a period of change. The size of the pig's ears indicate how good of a listener you are. The bigger, the better. And your pig's tail, it represents your love life. I'll just leave it there. All right. Welcome. As I mentioned before, I call this process strategic visioning. I use a process that's a little bit different than some strategic planning processes you've been through in the past. With a traditional model of strategic planning, we kind of start with what is. We try to predict what's going to happen in the next three to five years and create a plan for that. And then oftentimes, we're focused on things we can't change, and we're trying to control those things. Or we get really sucked into just kind of complaining about those things that we can't change instead of proactively focusing on the things that we can change. And what happens a lot of times, and I'm not saying every time, but a lot of times when something changes in the context of your plan, in the world around you, your plan can't adapt. And that's why so many strategic plans end up sitting on a shelf or in a computer folder somewhere and not actually implemented or used. Because unless you constantly touch base with that plan to see what's changed and adapt the plan, it's going to be outdated very quickly. So what we do with a visioning model is we think more about if Cannon Falls area schools could be anything we want, could be this pinnacle in the whole nation, what would it look like? And what things are we doing that are already getting us toward that goal? And what things are we doing that aren't moving us forward that we maybe could take off our plate? And what things do we want to start doing more of? So we really think about the end first versus where we are right now. And then we also think a lot about the context of the work that we're doing. So all of the things that impact the work that we do. And there's a lot of factors. There's the economy. There's legislation and politics. There's technology changes. There's, you know, staffing changes. There's just all of these things that are constantly changing in the world around us. And that does impact, especially with schools, the work that's happening. You know, there's, we talk a lot about in schools, the unfunded mandates. And there's a lot of things that we have to do as a school, but we don't always have the money, or we're told to do it without getting money to add that in. But we can't change that. We have to work within those parameters. So really focusing on those things that are within our scope of control and scope of change. And then what of all of those things that we could do, or should do, or want to do, or wish we could do, or would like to do to get to that place that we want to be? What is going to move us toward that goal with the most momentum? So what's going to move us from good to great? Because we can't do everything, and we can't implement every change at once. So what are those priority things that we're going to strategically focus on in the next three-ish years is kind of the time span I'd like you to think about. Beyond that, these days, things move so quickly, things could look very different in three years. So we're going to keep a three-year horizon in our mind. Any questions about the model? Are we having fun yet? So tonight is really about the big picture. And ultimately, the three sessions are all about the big picture. So what we want to come out with at the end of the third session are three to five strategic priorities that the board approves. So the board members are saying, "We've listened to the community. We've listened to staff. We've listened to district leadership. We've, you know, been on the board. We know what's going on in the district, what initiatives are going on." And we feel like these three to five things, and these are just big-picture things, are going to give us that momentum forward, that are going to put us on that right path. Then from there, it becomes the work of the leadership team, the educators, the other staff, to really figure out how to implement those things and what might need to come off the plate so new things can go on the plate, or how to mesh everything together, how to align everything into their daily work. So we want to focus tonight, when we're having our conversations, again, on the big picture. So I don't want to, we can make note about things like, "I wish we had..." I'm going to come up with something really weird. "I wish we had athletic shoes for every student." But that's not a big-picture goal. We can make note of it and document it and pass that down the line, but that's not going to become a strategic priority directive from the board. Right? So keep in mind, three-year horizon, big picture, strategic priorities are what ultimately we want to come up with. And tonight is the opportunity for you to have some input into that. I'm guessing you can't read that from the back. So what we're going to do tonight is kind of a variation on a process called a World Cafe. So we're going to be moving around quite a bit, and we're going to be talking about several topics. Now, I took a look at the existing strategic plan, which I know doesn't need to be the foundation for this one, but it gave me some broad topics to start with, and then I added a couple additional. So as a group, before we move on to the next step, our goal is to decide on five topics that we're going to talk about tonight. And we actually could make it six, five to six topics. So the goals within the last strategic plan were big and broad, so I left those in. So they include academic excellence, technology and innovation, partnership, which talks quite a bit about community engagement and partnerships with the community, school climate, so that talks quite a bit about positive behavior and safety and security of students. Number five, effective and efficient operations, which focused on budget and revenue and district operations such as transportation facilities, food service, et cetera. And then the sixth from the last strategic plan was fiscal responsibility. So as I was looking through the A's, I kind of felt like we could probably wrap a conversation of effective and efficient operations and fiscal responsibility into one because they both have quite a bit to do with budget and revenue. And I threw out a couple of other ideas that other districts have talked about, one being staffing and one being specifically talking about facilities and grounds. So not necessarily knowing what is all on the plate for Cannon Falls, I wanted to open this up a little bit to not be, you know, directed with what those five to six topics that we'll focus on tonight are. So if anyone would like to say they have a strong feeling that one or two or whatever should be included, I welcome that input now. This is the beginning of the participation part. Fiscal responsibility. Are we all in agreement on that?
Yeah, I think five and six can be wrapped together.
Okay. So we'll combine operations and fiscal responsibility into one topic. So we've got one. I should have brought chocolate. Anyone that speaks gets chocolate.
At least facilities needs to be on there.
Everyone agree with facilities being one? I can wait longer than you can. So we've got two. How many people would like to have some conversation around academic excellence, thinking of strategic priorities in that area? That one looks popular. How about technology and innovation?
I wonder about combining those two because technology kind of pigeonholes into one narrow focus where if you combine academic excellence and innovation, it's about the bigger picture and having the tools and the resources, which technology is one piece of that.
One piece, yep.
It's not all of it.
I agree. How about partnerships, community and partnerships? What about staffing?
When other schools have done that, what has that meant, staffing?
So it's something that can bubble up in any of the topics. Some districts that are experiencing especially difficulties with attracting teachers or retaining teachers, that's been something they really wanted to focus on. So if you don't feel like you've got big staffing issues, that will, if there are any smaller things around staffing, it will probably bubble up in one of the other topic areas like operations or academics or something too.
I think mindful staffing is probably a good way to think about that, looking at needs and wants and looking at being mindful about how we hire and what areas we hire for. And I know we've had some conversations with that in the past, about numbers, you know, and what that looks like in a classroom. But I don't, I think that's, again, one piece of it. But I think this district has been pretty good about mindful, being mindful about how we staff.
So what if under operations, when you're at that table having those conversations, it's about the fiscal side of things as well as staffing, you know, any other transportation, the food service, anything like that that's under operations? Are you comfortable kind of rolling that into that bigger picture?
Maybe across a few of them. I think in academic excellence, if you're talking staffing too, it could be class sizes or offerings.
How about we just keep it as a topic in mind throughout the conversation? I don't, I don't feel like it needs a separate table. Everybody good with that? All right. So we need to condense to five tables. We're pretty close. So that's your assignment. I'm going to put out the table tents with the topics. All right. So you will all get the opportunity to have input on all five of the topics. We're going to kind of move from table to table, and you can't see this either. But with a World Cafe, the idea is that the answers and the ideas really lie in our collective knowledge. So the more people we get thinking and talking around a topic, the more we're going to be able to identify those particular areas to focus on. There are kind of some guidelines. We want to listen and encourage people at your table to all use their voice. So some people are more comfortable with this sort of activity than others. And there's a couple options for those of you that don't like speaking up as much. There are Post-it notes in that box as well. Really, by the end of tonight, what I want is as many things out of your head and onto paper as possible. Because once you leave, I can't pick your brain anymore. So if you want to make sure that something is noted and documented, write your idea on a Post-it note. That way, it gets to me no matter what. If you don't want to talk about it at the table, that's fine. Or if we run out of time and you don't have a chance to talk about it with your tablemates, it still gets documented. So use those Post-it notes as much as you want. I've got lots of extras if you run out at your table. But also, as a group at your table, listen for patterns. So if you start to hear more than one person saying similar things, make a note of that or put a star next to it as you write it down, or whatever you want to do to identify that it was kind of a theme that you saw emerging. Encourage one another to speak. So if one person is dominating the conversation, I'm sure that won't happen tonight, but sometimes it does where one person just really has strong feelings about something and can't keep it concise. You know, try to facilitate that at your table. I'll be walking around as well. So contribute your thinking. Take the time to think and reflect. Again, sometimes that means like, okay, we've talked around this topic. Let's stop, think a second, and start on another topic. And listen to understand. So don't listen to respond, but listen to understand what that person is saying. A lot of times, especially when we're in an input session and we have our own perspective and our own opinions on things, it can be easy to be thinking about what you're going to say next, or how you're going to respond to what that person's saying, or how you're going to get your opinion across. I'd really encourage you to listen to one another, document what you're hearing, and everyone will get an opportunity to share. The way the process works is that we're going to talk about, and I'll give you a topic to talk about at each table, in a certain amount of time. You'll discuss that at the table until I tell you time's up. I'll give you some warnings, and then it'll be time to move to the next table. Ideally, one person would be willing to stay behind at the table that you're currently at and act as the table host. So kind of when the next group comes in, say, here's a couple of big, don't take the whole time, but two minutes. Say, here's a couple of big things we talked about, and then hopefully the conversation goes deeper into other things. If nobody wants to stay at their table and they'd like to continue on, then, and that's fine too, then it's the responsibility of everybody coming to the new table to kind of stop a minute, take a look at what's on the paper in front of you, read the notes there, and then carry on with a conversation about that topic. The point of that is that we don't end up with only two things ever being discussed about facilities because it was the same two things that everybody brought up as they rotated around. If you think that the same thing is a valid point, make a note of that, like, our table agrees that this is high priority, and then talk about something else. If there's nothing else to talk about, you can go deeper into conversation about that thing. Does that make sense? So what we're going to do, there's three big pieces of paper on your table. For each topic, we're going to talk about stop, start, continue. Those are the three things to think about. So what things in the areas of facilities and grounds should we stop doing or stop focusing on? That's the hardest one because unless there's something glaringly obvious, most don't want to stop anything. But if we can try to nail down a couple things that if we stopped focusing on that, we'd have time to focus on something else. So stop. Start would be new things, things we really need to focus on that we haven't had the opportunity or the funding or anything, whatever those barriers might be, to do in the past. So that's a difficult one too because it's easy to brainstorm a list of ideas of new things to start. So that's where we need to work on prioritization as we go through this process. And then the third is continue. So things in whatever area you're talking about that are working really well, are highly successful, are moving your district forward, that we need to make sure continue. So if there's an after-school program that's really serving students well, you would hate to see that go away because we needed to redirect funding somewhere else, that should make it onto the continue list. So we'll start with the continue piece. So we're going to focus on things to continue doing within the area that you're talking about. And again, you can write right on the white paper, or you can jot an idea on a Post-it note and put it on the white paper. I'm not real picky about the format, whatever works for you. You can have one person jot things on the paper, you can all jot things on the paper as long as the ideas and the discussion, not in full, I mean, you don't have to dictate everything you're saying. But get the main ideas of what you're talking about at your table documented because that's the only way it's going to move forward in this process and really give perspective to the next two sessions. Okay? So the topic at your table and things that the district should continue doing because it's highly successful and working well within that topic area is our first conversation. Questions?
Are we doing one of each of those on each sheet?
Yes.
So we'll have a continue sheet and a stop sheet.
Yes. So you will have a continue sheet, and after this round, we'll move that sheet, and then we'll have a, I don't know which order I'm going to choose, but a start sheet and a stop sheet for each one. So three sheets at the end for each topic. Okay? Other questions? All right. I can update it. I can update it.
Five minutes.
Where do we put the whole child? Do we put that under?
I think it's a continuing thing. I can do examples because if they're not, yeah, the conversation will be on.
All right, so I'd like a little bit of feedback. How did that process feel? Is there anything you'd like to tweak or modify before we do it again? Was there anything clumsy about it other than more time? I mean, if you'd like to stay till 10, I can extend the time. Any suggestions for improvement? Did anyone find themselves having even an iota of fun yet? I didn't want to have to cry already. All right. This is going to be very exhausting too. All right, so we're going to try the same process again. This one will probably go a little bit faster because we're going to do the stop. Now I know over at this table, they pre-labeled the sheets, so you're going to have to switch your sheets. They were very well prepared. So we're going to start with the stop. As I said, oftentimes these are a little bit harder to generate and the lists sometimes are shorter. So I'll play it by ear based on your interactions. All right, so we're doing stop with the topic at your table. Go for it. I reiterate, please do not leave tonight and spread around the community that we are stopping anything based on this evening. If I hear any rumors, I might be fired for session two and three. All right, so moving on to the start. This to me is the most exciting because you really get to think outside the box, think of, stay with me for a moment. You get to think into the future, think of things you wish the district was doing or could do without, I don't want you to get in the box of, but we can't afford it. Did everyone hear that? It's very easy to be like, well, that'd be cool, but we can't afford it, so don't put it on the paper. I still want to capture those ideas because a lot of times there's ways to start small or to iterate or to come up with creative partnership solutions. So we want to end the evening on a high note and exciting note with things that we could do to drive this district into the future. Any questions? They obviously are already bubbling over with ideas. Yeah, okay, let's get going. All right. I'm going to have everybody take a quick seat. We are rounding out at the end of our time here, so. I'm glad to see everyone so engaged though. Okay. So if I can get the floor for a moment, we are almost done, but not quite. Okay, so first before the very last activity, which will kind of be your exit ticket out the door, I would just like to share with you next steps so that you know where all of this information goes next. I have a team on standby for tomorrow morning to type all of this up and help me get it into some sort of a usable format. That will then come to the district and that will help inform the next two planning meetings, which are next Monday and the Monday after from 6 to 9. So at the next session, we're going to be looking at the existing vision and mission, not starting from scratch or rewriting because nobody thinks that's fun, but just making sure that they still represent the district and the board and the staff and there's no wordsmithing or changes we would like to make. And then we're going to do an activity called a context map. I've talked a lot about focusing on the things that we have control over and trying to let go of complaining about the things that we don't have control over. So this is an activity that I use that helps kind of formulate the next steps within the confines of what we have control over. The group that will be moving on for session two and three includes the board members, I believe you call it the leadership team, is that right? And then a group of teachers. Okay, so the community members' input will be shared at the next one and we will talk about a way that we will work that in as well. And then after the third session, information will also be shared back. So at the third session, which is November 4th, we will develop those strategic priorities. So three to five kind of big picture directives, so to speak, from the board of focus areas for the next three years or so. That is the goal of the next two sessions. Then I finalize the documentation, put it into graphics that make it easy to share out with stakeholders, and then it will be shared out from there. So any questions about next steps? All right. So the last activity for the evening, and I won't have a chance to call you back together, so I do thank you so much for your very engaged participation tonight. It was very impressive and for giving up three hours on a Monday night to be here on behalf of the school to improve the work that the school is doing. It says a lot about the community that you all showed up, so I thank you for that. I didn't know whether to expect five or 200, so this was about the perfect size too. So I appreciate that. You will find on your tables some sticky dots. So there's two steps left. The first step is I need somebody to take the last big sticky sheet and put it on the far left side of each of those clusters on the wall up there. And then the sticky dots, each person take a sheet of those, please. There should be enough in the middle of the table for everyone to grab some sticky dots. All right. The last thing is for us to use these sticky dots to kind of help with some prioritization because a lot of ideas came out tonight. And what I would like to do is have each of you, you're each allotted two sticky dots per sheet of paper, which means six sticky dots per topic. Does that make sense? I mean, how many dots you have? If you give me back the sheet and you've used more dots than that, there's going to be trouble. Okay, so what you can do with your sticky dots is put them on either the top two things on that sheet that you feel very strongly about, or you can put both your dots on one thing on that sheet that you feel very strongly about. Okay? But only two per sheet, per person. You are sticky dotting.